I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board for December 18th, 2018. Can you please rise and join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President D. Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Jaworska?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pennicola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's eight.
I want to advise the Board and residents that the public hearing on the proposed annexation agreement for the properties located at 4 North, 385 Hawthorne Avenue, 4 North, 323 Hawthorne Avenue, 16 West, 603 White Pines Road, 4 North, 240 Church Road, 4 North, 252 Church Road, 4 North, 324 Church Road, and 4 North, 386 Church Road will not be held this evening. The public hearing will be scheduled at a meeting of the Board of Trustees in the month of January of 2019. Any interested party can check the Village's website for additional information on the rescheduled public hearing.
Mayor, if I could just interject on that for, um, the reason there is, uh, our new zoning code is going to affect January 1st. To make sure everything's just clean, it makes sense to do those annexations after that zoning code goes into effect. So we'll go through the whole notice process once again, notify all the residents, and then, uh, when that, everything will be adopted after the new zoning code.
Okay, thank you. We will now proceed to the public hearing on the Village's General Obligation Bond Series 2019. This is a public hearing being held pursuant to the requirements of Section 10 and 20 of the Board Issue Notification Act of the State of Illinois. Notice of this hearing was published on November 23rd, 2018, in a newspaper of general circulation in the Village. This is a hearing regarding a plan to issue not to exceed $1,200,000 in aggregate principal amount of the Village's General Obligation Bond Series 2019. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance various capital projects in and for the Village and pay certain costs of issuance of the bonds. The bonds will be issued by the Village in accordance with the provisions of the Illinois Municipal Code and the Local Government Debt Reform Act of the State of Illinois. And shall...
Well, this is kind of nice.
You need more Christmas light.
Pay the bill.
That was Sergeant Fuja.
I'm interested in your bond.
We could've disappeared on that night. We'd turn the lights off, we'd all run out of here. Let me start on that paragraph again. "The bonds will be issued by the Village in accordance with the provisions of the Illinois Municipal Code and the Local Government Debt Reform Act of the State of Illinois, and shall constitute a general obligation of the Village payable from the debt service extension base as permitted by law, and to determine the lien priority of payments to be made from the base to pay the Village's limited bonds and such other funds of the Village lawfully available and annually appropriated for such purpose." This public hearing is required by Sections 10 and 20 of the Bond Issue Notification Act of the State of Illinois residents, I'm sorry, residents, taxpayers, and other interested persons will now be given the opportunity to express their views for or against the proposed plan of financing, the issuance of the bonds, and the purpose of the issuance of the bonds. If any person would like to speak, I ask that you please approach the podium in the back of the room and state your name and comment. If any person wishes to submit written comments, I ask that you please approach the dais at this time and provide the written comments to the village clerk. Does anybody want to make a public comment? Anybody have a written comment? This will conclude the public hearing on the Village's General Obligation Bond Series 2019, and is now closed. We will proceed with the regular order of business. We will move the public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. Do we have public comment?
Yes.
We're all sick up here, so. Jim Hamel, would you, uh, please approach the podium?
Thank you very much. A brief, uh, a brief prepared statement here. The Bensonville and Wooddale Food Pantry extends its heartfelt thanks and appreciation to Village President Frank D. Simone, his staff, the Village Department and agencies for their lead role in making the Canadian Pacific Holiday Food Train visit to our Village a huge and smashing success. Nearly 4,000 pounds of non-perishable food items were donated, and the Bensonville-Wooddale Food Pantry was presented with a $10,000 donation from the Canadian Pacific Railway. This event shows what can happen when our local agencies work together and share in a common goal. The commitment demonstrated by all involved can only enhance the great relationship that the Food Pantry and the Village now share. We at the Bensonville-Wooddale Food Pantry look forward to working with the Village in the future, in future endeavors to help aid all residents that are in nutritional need. Once again, thank you, and hopefully we can all do this again next year. And on a personal note, I would like to, uh, extend a thanks to Mary Ribondo, Gary Thorson, and Steve Skersky for their efforts that made my small partners a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you. You stole a little bit of my thunder at the end of the night, but, I mean, seeing that event, I was like a kid in a, in a, in a train store. It was phenomenal, but, uh, hopefully we can get it again next year.
I hope so.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak? This will conclude public comment. The Holiday Home Decorating Contest winners are going to be announced. Uh, I ask that we deviate from the regular order of business in order to announce the Holiday Home Decorating Contest and winners, and present them with the citation. Is there a motion to deviate from the agenda for the Holiday Home Decoration Contest and, and presenting them with the citation?
So moved.
Oh, wait. Oh, I, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. We're gonna, we're gonna deviate to present the Holiday Home Decorating Contest. Also, we are presenting the Police Department with a unit citation. So we're gonna do two things. So do I have a motion to deviate from the agenda for the Holiday Home Decorating Contest and the presentation of the unit citation?
We have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and we announce the Holiday Home Decorating Contest winners. Uh, so... I'm assuming that's in here somewhere. So I know I have, we have Bensonville swag bag back here, so I know we have winners. So our second place winner, whoops, sorry. Our second place winner is Chris Hernandez and family. Are you guys here? Come on up.
We've got some of the entries for Home Decorating Contest on the screen behind you that's available on the Village's Facebook page.
So our first place winner is going to be Patricia Engel and the family?
Mine also doesn't have to be nice because you're his neighbor.
Hey, mine too.
How long did it take you guys to decorate your house?
Couple weeks.
Couple weeks? Awesome. If any residents want to go and check some of these houses out, these houses are actually located right next to each other on South Addison Street, 835 and 188 South Addison. Um, there's also some great houses. It was a tough choice this year. Um, it's, uh, I know there's a close runner-up on our friends on Church Street, uh, they're in the audience tonight. But, uh, it's a great time for the community to come together and just kind of have friendly rivalries to, uh, make the town, uh, just glow with the holiday cheer.
At this time, I'd like to call Chief Dan Schultz up to, uh, present the unit citation for the Detective Division of the Bensonville Police Department.
Thank you. On December the 3rd, at about 11:50 in the morning, at the T-Mobile Store near Grandon, York, it's at 1137 South York exactly, four subjects broke into the store and robbed it of some cell phones, some iPads or Pods and tablets and things of that nature, electronic devices. They left there and they immediately went over to, uh, the Sprint Store at 624 North York in Elmhurst and robbed that. Our detectives joined together with the Elmhurst detectives and immediately started working the case. One of the phones that they stole was actually activated and they were able to track the phone. They tracked it out to Harvey, Illinois. So our detectives and Elmhurst detectives went out to Harvey. The police there engaged in a pursuit but lost the vehicle. Our detectives continued to work on it and track those people for two days, and in two days, they had two of them in custody and the other two identified, and brought them back here to face arrest. So they were issued a unit citation because the sergeant in charge of the detectives actually pulled together a group of people in the department, including a patrol officer and his investigative aide. They all worked together collectively with the Elmhurst police and brought them back to justice. So I'd like to ask them to step in, and I'd like to present the awards. In no particular order, but I'll pass them on in the order that I have them. This is Sergeant Eric Zadro. He commands the unit. Officer Doug Sanborn. Detective Michael Larson. Officer Libu Matthew. And last and certainly not least, Elizabeth Mitvik. Also being honored tonight is Detective Saul Herrera. Unfortunately, he had a death in the family and could not attend, but will accept the award on his behalf.
It's good to hear good things from the Police Department. Maybe a little biased up here on my behalf, but, uh, they do great work, faced with tough things to accomplish every day, and they, they come through every day. We're much appreciative of them here in Bensonville. Let's move on to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November 13th, 2018 Village Board meeting?
You have a motion?
Is there a second? Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. The next item for business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $3,391,518. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion of the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda this evening. Moving on, uh, resolution authorizing a letter of understanding between the Elgin-O'Hare Western Access Project, EOWA, and the Village of Bensonfor, Bensonville for an Illinois Tollway Proposed Maintenance Site Utility Relocation and Landscaping. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion from the Board? Evan?
So, uh, as the Tollway finishes its final push on 390, uh, which will be through Bensonville along Thordale Avenue, there were several items that were outstanding that the Village wanted, the Tollway wanted, and we decided that, uh, through staff negotiations, the best way to handle those and address those would be, be through one comprehensive letter of understanding. That letter of understanding lays out, um, what the Village is expecting the Tollway, what the Tollway's got to expect of the Village, um, and a lot of this stuff is very beneficial to the Village. So, uh, first, the Tollway's ask is to build a maintenance facility on some excess property they have, uh, the map is up on the screen right there, along Thordale. Um, it's, we reviewed the property to see if it had any intrinsic value for redevelopment. It doesn't because of how it's situated with the Tollway coming through. So the Tollway will be able to put their maintenance facility there, which allows Bensonville roads to get maintained first, which is important. That was very important for the Tollway. It's also very important to us. The second aspect of it is, uh, there will be some undergrounding of utilities along Green Street. Underground utilities are important, especially for our industrial sector. They're more resilient, especially as we saw in that last ice storm. Um, if we put them underground, not only is it more resilient, it's also, uh, helps with the beautification of the street. There'll be landscaping along the north side of Green Street. Um, we anticipate a lot of that property that was acquired by the Tollway over the past several years will be used for construction of a road or for, to sell off to, um, the railroad, uh, Canadian Pacific. So we want to make sure that that screen helps preserve our neighborhoods. Um, there's also some language in there in excess right-of-way that the Tollway's going to have a say in, so they're gonna help, uh, the Village gets a first read of refusal on the south Aaron Equipment side. That's the Aaron Equipment on Green Street, just south of Green Street. Um, and then the Tollway's gonna help us coordinate with IDOT for the ever coveted Seaford property located up on York Road, right at the interchange. IDOT owns it. It's not really the Tollway's to give, but they're gonna help us, uh, with that conversation. So that pretty much sums it up. This, uh, basically is just a letter of understanding. All this will have to come back in front of the Board for, you know, if there's any act, other action items that need to come through.
Now, I remember many, many years ago, there was a big hot topic about the Tollway putting in, uh, maintenance facility in the middle of town, and everybody was up in arms.
Right.
Just so we all know, this isn't, we can't develop on this site.
No, no, it's absolutely not developed.
It's kind of tucked away where it, it makes sense really only for them.
Correct. And we also were able to extract some things out of them on design of this facility. It's not gonna be an open pit yard with piles of salt and trucks outside it. Um, all the vehicles will be inside. Um, there'll be some fuel stations on the outside, but, uh, the drawings they submitted to us are rather pleasant to look at. Doesn't look like the industrial things you see out on, you know, 355 and stuff.
Do we have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution approving an agreement with Avion Consultants LLC in the Village of Bensonville for aviation consulting services. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Evan?
So Avion Consultants is, uh, the Village's aviation noise contractor. Uh, Ron Seymour is the practitioner of the firm. Ron used to run the noise program for Seattle Tacoma Airport. He relocated out here. When, he was actually working for a company that, uh, when I got here, the Village was paying $10,000 a month too, um, which is a lot of money. Uh, we identified Ron as the person of interest in that organ, in that group, and we said, "Hey Ron, how much would it cost to hire you just directly rather than go through a, a company?" And we were able to work out a rate of $150 an hour with Ron. Um, Ron's billing since that day, uh, rarely ever exceeds $1,000 a month. So we're paying 10% of what we were previously paying, and we get a higher quality of work out of Ron. Ron attends all the, uh, noise meetings with me. Um, he is a trusted voice in all those commissions. Um, Chicago actually calls him to see how, you know, what he feels and what his opinions are on different structures and the flight paths that we're working on. So invaluable resource that we were, were getting at much, uh, greater value than we previously were.
And keeping him on board now with what's going on in the city of Chicago with elections and things are, is key.
Yes, um, Ron is kind of a brain trust that everyone knows. Um, with, we're gonna likely have a new aviation commissioner once the new mayor gets on board, and we're gonna need to work Ron's angle as well as, you know, all hands on deck to try to make sure that we hold our position at the table. I say it all the time, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So, uh, the Village has been at the table for the last three years and then, uh, the last four years, and that's very important for us.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Moving on to Community and Economic Development Committee, ordinance adopting a new Bensonville zoning. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
We'll have Curtis and, uh, start off, and Mr. Veiger will, uh, be our closer.
Thank you, President and Trustees. Uh, just wanted to kind of give a brief overview of all the work that's gone into this. Uh, process basically started in 2016 after we approved our comprehensive plan. Uh, we got another grant with CMAP, uh, Chicago Metropolitan Agency, we were planning to redo our entire zoning ordinance, so this would be an entire replacement of the current zoning. Uh, in 2016, started with stakeholder interviews. Uh, we had a public kickoff, we did an online survey, and CMAP produced a recommendations memo that was presented to our CDC, which was the steering committee. And then, uh, the next two years, 2017, 2018, were really the, uh, the, the meat and potatoes of it. Uh, CMAP drafted the ordinance. Uh, we had a lot of meetings with staff, uh, with CDC, a lot of revisions of the ordinance. I think there were seven in total. Um, and that's what's in front of you, uh, tonight. Uh, we did a public open house, uh, actually several public open houses, uh, and then finally on October 30th, had a public hearing, uh, in front of the CDC, which was the, uh, kind of the, the big reveal to the public. Uh, we wanted to make sure we were notifying everybody in the Village. We sent out 9,029 direct mailings to every address in town. We wanted to make sure everybody was aware of this public hearing. Uh, we published legal notices in the Daily Herald and the Independent, ran them twice actually. Had a event, uh, created on Facebook, had over 4,000 impressions, uh, Twitter with over 3,700 impressions, had it on our website, put it on the EMC on York Road. Uh, that's, you know, 12,000 average daily traffic, you know, so eyes on that, uh, Electronic Message Center sign. And then Evan and I actually did a spotlight on Bensonville, so we had a video on our local access. Uh, so just like I, you know, like I was saying, uh, really wanted to make sure everybody was aware of what was going on. This has been a good, you know, two and a half, three-year-long process, culminating in what you're seeing tonight.
Scott, if you wanna fill in, uh, the wrap-up and where we're at tonight?
Sure, I'll try to be, uh, somewhat brief. Well, this, this is a big deal. Um, in 38 years, I think this is the second one I've ever been able to do, and Curtis just did one in Berwyn two years ago, so he's, he's, he's really lucky, so. Or maybe not, if I'm really lucky. So it, it's hard to overestimate the impact that the zoning ordinance has on all of our lives. I mean, the last ordinance, the, the one that hopefully will be replaced, is from 1999, so call it a 20-year document. So fast forward 20 years from now, and this, what we hopefully get approved tonight will be still on the books. Um, so we tweet this ordinance along the way, the 99 ordinance, but this is, as Curtis said, is, you know, throwing the baby out with the bath of water and starting from scratch. The goal of this whole thing, um, was, I'll say, to simplify it. Uh, we always say we're in the information business, provide the mayor and the Village decision-makers with information, provide the citizens with information, so we need to transmit that information in, um, language and, and graphics and images that, that are easy for them to use. And we think this ordinance does that. Uh, we, we, we brought, as Curtis said, through all of those public processes, this is 200-page document, so there, there's lots of things to look at, and we brought it, of course, to the Village Board. I've just forgot the date, but we brought it to the Village Board, a, and of course, you folks had some, some suggestions. Chief among those was accessory dwelling units or granny flats. We, we, we removed those from the ordinance. Uh, we, but also some, some things that aren't as high-profile, we had discussions on. Everything from the location of detached garages to the garage designs to, uh, fire pits and compost bins and dog runs and, you know, RVs and commercial districts and all sorts of things like that. And we wanted to make sure that all of those changes that were brought up by our friends and neighbors also corresponded with the building codes and the fire codes that we have, to make sure we weren't sending mixed signals. So that was all done. As I said, we, we really wanted to simplify this, not only for our homeowners, but for our commercial developers as well. You know, they, they play in a risky business, and they need to know the rules up front, and, and we don't want to be changing them. So what we did, we, we simplified it by making use categories that are very broad, uh, in commercial districts and in industrial districts. Instead of having 100 different types of things, we have broader categories so that we can, um, interpret as technology changes and new uses come and go. But then, we kind of give it and take it away. We say, "Here are use standards for all of these different uses, from gas stations to laundromats and things like that, uh, accessory structures to wind, wind, uh..."
Turbines.
Thank you. And, uh, solar panels, so that, you know, we, we say you can have them, but here's the rules we want to have you follow. And, and so they, they get that up front, and, and it should be really well. On the simplification part, um, one of the, the, the beginning points we had, we had too many districts. Uh, we had 10 residential districts, we dropped it to six. We had nine non-residential districts, we dropped it to four. Um, I should say, one of the changes we made, we even renumbered the commercial district so it made more sense to our homeowners. So these broad categories, we have the design. We, instead of saying, um, minimum parking requirements for commercial, uh, we have maximum parking, so we don't have more cars, more parking, we have more building. We have flexibility in landscape design, instead of saying, "Put a tree here, put a tree there." Institute a performance standards, so as you meet these performance standards, use your landscape architect to design this site the way you want it, and the code also gives Curtis and, and hopefully the associate planner we hire soon, uh, more, uh, site plan authority at the permit process to, to get even a better product. We encourage front porches. You've seen some front porches on homes, they had to come for a variation, and Mr. and Mrs. Bensonville says, "I don't want, I don't want to spend 30 days and spend a hundred bucks, you know, I'm not gonna do it." This will allow them to make those improvements to their home without that need for the public hearing. Finally, we, it's formatted totally different. There's lots of text, but there's also lots of images and maps and elevations and, and perspective drawings that will help us as well as our, our users identify that. We got rid of the techno-speak, and I love techno-speak, but they said I couldn't do it. So we talk in plain English, and, and this is gonna be great. Like I said, it's very exciting, you can tell, I'm about as excited as I get. It's very cool. And here's, here's my closer, here's my line.
That's what we pay you for.
This, this is the thing, this document, should you choose to approve this 200-page document tonight, this is gonna be the thing that allows us to partner with our friends and neighbors to create the vision for our community and our children that we want to see for the next 20 years.
That was beautiful.
That was brief, too.
Hey, Scott's world that is.
Scott Veiger, brief.
To make it Evan Summers' brief, I, I want to tell you, Board, this will probably be the lasting document of your administration. This will be on the books for 20 years. This is gonna be the most important thing that every resident's gonna deal with, every business will deal with for 20 years.
I'm only 24.
Long live the king.
So, just to, just so we can reiterate, the issues that we, or the concerns that we had, um, coming up through the, for the meetings that we had, we addressed them, we corrected them.
Yeah.
We're good to go.
The big thing, I know the Board was the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. It's taken out. I do want to say I do want to personally revisit it at a later date. I do think there is some opportunity for the Village to expand our, our offerings to residents. Now's not that day, though. So we're gonna take it out, we'll revisit it down the road. That was my promise to Curtis. Curtis, we're gonna keep having these...
So we receive no more text, email, Facebook message, nothing on, on behalf of that?
Yes. The resident output was very clear, especially from a few key residents, and, uh, those changes have been incorporated.
Do we have any questions here on the Board? Can you call the roll?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is now passed. Number two is an ordinance approving a variance to allow a parking pad at 217 South Center Street, Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Scott?
Not quite as big a deal as the last one, but it certainly is a big deal to our friends here on Center Street. 217 Center, just south of Wood Street here a little bit. It has a driveway off-center, and then they're requesting that they be able to, it's a one-car drive. There is no garage on the property, and they're requesting, you can see in red on the thing, to create what we call a parking pad off the alley. So that one car pulls in off-center, one car pulls in off the alley. Current code, of course, does not allow that, so they came before us with a variation. Public hearing on the 4th of December, if I'm thinking correctly. And the CDC found and concurred with the village staff recommendation that the findings of fact for hardship existed, and that did recommend approval unanimously. There is a condition that should they ever build a garage, that they take out the one driveway.
Is there any questions on the board? Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and ordinance is now passed. Number three is an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow a gunsmith shop at 1180 Industrial Drive. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? We're going with Scott or Evan on this?
Scott on this one, and I'll finish up if I have to.
This one, Schmidt Tools bought the building at the corner of Route 83 and Industrial, two years ago, about two years ago. It's a second location for their firm, they're doing great there. They have a contract to make machine parts that go into firearms. So the ATF folks called and said, hey, do you guys think this is a gunsmith? Under our code, it actually is. So there will be no retail sales of firearms on the site. It's basically a machine shop. This conditional use as a gunsmith is necessity because of the types of parts they make for the firearm. There was a public hearing wrapped up on the 4th of December. We found that the conditions of approval were met, approval criteria, I should say, are met. CDC unanimously recommended approval, as does the staff.
Yeah, and just to be clear on this one, it's not a gun range, it's not a retail sales location, it's a, we're manufacturing firearm equipment here. The proprietor is in the audience, if his board has any questions, we can direct him.
Does the board have any questions? Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee, trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number four is an ordinance approving conditional use permit to allow an animal hospital and veterinarian offices at 1204 West Irving Park Road. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
No motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the Bensonville Animal Hospital. It's been at 1032 West Irving Park Road for decades. Dr. Delon and his group, that owns 35 animal hospitals, by the way.
Just found that out.
Yeah, well, I thought it was 33, so they keep all the new ones. So they have contract purchasers for the old, as we call it, the Casa de Capa restaurant at 1204 Irving that's been vacant for a while. It's conditional use for the animal hospital, was recommended for approval. This is actually a better site, I think, than the 1032 site. It's got a better parking lot. It's not next to the multiple family, the apartment's here at the apartment complex, Esri, excuse me. So we're excited about this. They are going to make some improvements. Obviously, the building has been gutted, so they'll have some improvements to make to that building. But we're excited that four years ago, they had confidence in Bensonville and moved, bought that animal hospital, and now are expanding to a new location. We did recommend approval, and on the 4th, the CDC unanimously recommended approval as well.
Any questions?
The proprietor is also here for this one as well, so if the board has any questions. Thank you, and thank you for your commitment to Bensonville. This will be a great location, serves a long-term vacancy for us, so thank you.
No questions on the board, please call the roll.
Trustee, trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number five is an ordinance annexing the single-family home at 4 North 651 Briar Lane. Are we?
Yeah, we're going to, like I mentioned at the top of the meeting, we're going to table all the annexations this evening. Just, we want those to go into effect after the new zoning code.
So we're good on that? Oh, we're going to table this, I'm sorry, the motion is to table it. Ordinance annexing the single-family homes at 4 North 651 Briar Lane, and also annex 11825 Franklin Avenue to the Village of Bensonville. So is there a motion to table items five and six on the agenda?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and ordinance is tabled. We're going to, we're going to pass this over to Cory for you.
Thank you.
Cory, you have information in front of you? You're going to come in relief, okay? We're going to move on to finance. A resolution establishing the refuse, recycling, and yard waste rates and republic services for the Village of Bensonville from January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? This is, we've been working on this forever.
This has been taking, it's probably 18 months worth of work, yeah. Whenever, every other contract that we bring to you guys is going up in cost. This is one we're proud to announce, and is one that affects every single one of our residents in town. I'll hand it off to Ahmet to go through the details, but I do want to just thank the Public Works. Joe and Giovanna worked on this very diligently. Ahmet and his staff put a lot of work in this, too, and also Republic Service, these were, probably had almost 20 meetings to get to this point, so it was a lot of work. Ahmet?
Good evening, Mr. President and the trustees. What we have in front of you today is a five-year refuse and recycling service contract. As of today, a single-family house pays $24.77 for unlimited amount of garbage and recycling. With the negotiation with Republic Services, the rate that we have in front of us, it's $23.53. That's $1.24 lower every month than what we have as of today. That's 5.01% reduction. Senior do get 15% discount, so their rate will be $20 even per month. That's $1.08 lower than what we have as of today, and all of the rates are listed there. The contract does provide for an escalation of 3% each year, and with that escalation will be where we are today, around at the end of third year. So this is a very nice contract. All other surrounding communities are going up. On the other side, we have negotiated a better rate for our residents, and I think we should go ahead and approve this contract.
We have one of the best garbage contracts in the area in the sense that it's a take-all contract. A lot of cities make you come into Village Hall and buy stickers for yard waste and garbage and recycling. It's take-all. I jokingly say there's a house in town that I drive by once a week, and it's a new mattress on the side of the curb every single week. Well, they take that. Doesn't matter how many mattresses you put out, we'll take it. So we were able to preserve all of that. We were able to preserve important things like the senior discount, yard waste, all that's in here. There's a big macroeconomic thing that's putting pressure on this contract, and that's China is redoing how they accept recyclables from America. Used to be 5% contamination, now it's down to 2%, and that's driving costs up everywhere. So there's a 25-cent charge on here, but that's factored into this, so 25 cents per month. We were still able to negotiate beyond, below that, so that was really important. Like I said, this is probably one of our largest contracts that we'll sign every year. Multi-million dollar contract, and prices went down.
Any questions? Cory, can you call the roll?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six, the motion carries.
Motion carries and resolution is now approved. Moving on, to the Police Department, is the ordinance amending Title V, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Chapter 2, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section 12, 13, and 14, to update downtown parking restrictions. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'm going to have Joe Karachi describe this one for us, just because Chief Schultz is still a little new to the area. So Joe's got some intimate knowledge of the issues with parking in downtown, so, Joe.
You bet. Thank you. With the changes in the downtown over the last couple of years and the changings anticipated for this year, it was really time to take another good look at the parking in the downtown area. Signage needs to be put up in order for the Police Department to enforce any sort of parking restrictions. So a team of the Village Manager's Office, Community Economic Development Police, and Public Works got together a couple of weeks ago to look at the area in general and what we're looking for out of parking. The map up on the screen that you have in front of you is basically a depiction of what we came up with. The green areas are the commuter parking lots, so this would be the main parking lot that was just reconstructed this summer, along with three bays on the north side of Main Street that are west of Addison. Those will remain as commuter parking. You'll still have to note your stall and pay $1.50 each day that you use that parking. That would be from 6:00 AM to 11:00 AM. After 11:00 AM, that opens up to free four-hour parking for all of our commuters and visitors to Bensonville. The orange area, which is the two-hour parking in front of Village Hall, will remain two-hour parking. And then all the blue areas will be four-hour parking. These are all the new designated parking areas, the parallel parking areas, any sort of perpendicular or diagonal parking areas that are on-street will be four-hour parking. And basically, all the red indicates through traffic, so that we know parking in the red areas on the map. We'll be continuous with this as we start to reconstruct the south side of the downtown area this summer. When it's all said and done, we'll have the ordinances in place for enforcement to occur. Our plan is to get the signs up, assuming approval tonight, get the signs up before the 1st of January, so that the Police Department can start enforcing as of January 1.
Your overarching goals on this were to make it simple enough for visitors that have never been to Bensonville to understand. You know, we've all been to the downtowns where it says, you know, full moons you can park here, and leap years you can park there. Doesn't make any sense. So we try to simplify as much as we can, but we also will need to address all of our customers here, which include Metro, Village Hall, people paying their bill, and businesses down here that are trying to make a living. So we want to address all that and balance it. We think this is the best way to do it.
Do we have any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six, the motion carries.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Moving on to Public Works, we have a resolution authorizing a construction award to Utility Dynamics Incorporated of Oswego, Illinois, for the 2018 CDBG Annual Residential Streetlight Project in a not-to-exceed amount of $321,587. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
I'm going to hand the next 14 items off to Joe Karachi, because they involve everything from annual boring renewals to polymer stuff I don't understand.
This will be for our 2018 residential streetlight program. We've been doing this for the last four or five years. This is a community development block grant funded project. We split 50/50 costs with DuPage County's block grant program. This year, we are looking at putting in 47 new streetlights in the area up on your screen, which is bound by York Avenue to the west, Green Street to the north, Marion Court to the east, and Pine Avenue to the south. So again, keeping consistent with our other residential projects, we'll use a similar decorative streetlight, alternating each side of the street about every 150 feet or so. And again, this project is looking to install 47 different streetlights. We did bid this project, Utility Dynamics, who also performed the project for us last year, submitted the lowest bid of $321,587. Again, this is a 50/50 split with DuPage County as part of their block grant program, so it's our recommendation to approve.
Do you have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six, the motion carries.
Motion carries and the resolution is now approved. Number two is an ordinance designating certain property as surplus, is authorized and authorizing the disposal of. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this item includes two pieces of equipment. One of them is a ice resurfacer over at the Rec Department. This 1999 Olympia ice resurfacer has met the end of its useful life. You'll see later on the agenda tonight, Todd will be bringing forth the purchase of a new ice resurfacer. Our plan was to declare this surplus so that we can actually use it as a trade-in to reduce the cost of the new ice resurfacer. The second one is a 2001 Ford Ranger used in the Engineering Department of Public Works. We'll be replacing that with a repurposed SUV police patrol vehicle that currently came off the police's patrol with a new vehicle, so we'll repurpose that for our engineering technician's use.
Do we have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six, the motion carries.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a year one from a two-year contract with Best Quality Cleaning Incorporated for janitorial services at the Police and Emergency Management Headquarters in a not-to-exceed amount of $26,160. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is our annual contract for cleaning the police department, our new police department over on Green Street. It is a LEED Gold Certified Building, so it does require certain certifications of a contractor to perform that work in order to continue to maintain our LEED status. Bids were open on November 28th, six bidders responded. Best Quality Cleaning submitted the lowest bid in the amount of $26,160 for 2019 and $26,400 for 2020. We did perform reference checks, as this was a new contractor to us. Everything came back very positive and glowing recommendations. So staff is recommending approving year one of this contract, and they would get started as soon as January 1st.
Do we have any questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six, the motion carries.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing the execution of, I'm sorry, of a year one from a two-year contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation, a KERS company, for the purchase and delivery of sodium bisulfate in a not-to-exceed amount of $10,900. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is one of four chemicals we're going to be looking for approval tonight at our board meeting for our wastewater treatment plant. Basically, some of the process does involve chemicals being added to our treatment. Sodium bisulfate is actually a chemical that neutralizes the chlorine that we put in to disinfect the waste before we release it into the creek and then over to Redmond, so it's a neutralizing agent. That's important to our process in order for us to meet our EPA requirements. We did bid this out this year. We had two bidders actually submit bids. One of them was a weird one. It submitted a bid that said they were not going to submit a bid. So it actually turned out to be one sole source on this through the bid process. We bid it because we only know one source, and we're hoping to find out that there would be more. So the next couple of these are all going to be through Alexander Chemical. They provide chemicals to most wastewater treatment plants in the area, so it's our recommendation to move forward with this contract. The total value of the contract is $9,000, I'm sorry, $10,900 for the chemical of sodium bisulfate.
Do we have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number five is a resolution authorizing the execution of a year one from a two-year contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation, a KERS company, for the purchase and delivery of sodium hypochlorite in a not-to-exceed amount of $20,010. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Sodium hypochlorite is a fancy name for bleach or chlorine, so this is what we kill all the bacteria before we release it to the stream. So another important chemical for our process. Again, on November 28th, we opened up bids. Alexander provided a bid of 8.7 cents per pound. We use about 23,000 pounds of bleach each year, so it's our recommendation to approve year one in the amount of $20,010.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.[1627.04]
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number six is a resolution authorizing the extension agreement with Brentag Great Lakes Alsea for the purchase and delivery of polymer in a not-to-exceed amount of $22,460. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Polymer is a chemical that we use to thicken our sludge and provide the right density so that we can land-apply this into our farms. In 2017, we investigated three different polymers. This Brentag CP9810 is what it's called, is found to be the best one for our application with our new plant. It provides us with the best final product that we can get. Recommending a contract extension to Brentag for the purchase of 2,300 pounds of this material for a cost of $22,460.
Any discussion? Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Johorska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number seven is a resolution authorizing the execution of year one from a two-year contract with Eternally Green Lawn Care in a not-to-exceed amount of $13,998. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
How about a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So the village contracts out turf chemical application each year to help control our weeds on our village-owned properties and certain right-of-ways that we feel are important. Currently, we treat 21 different sites three times per year. At the November 20th bid opening, Eternally Green submitted the lowest two-year price for the contract out of the three bidders that submitted. Again, new contractor to us, so we did do reference checks. Yielded very good responses from those municipalities that they've worked for in the past. So staff does recommend approval of year one of this two-year contract in the amount of $13,998.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Johorska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number eight is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to Al Warren Oil Company Incorporated, providing fuel tank rental and fleet fueling services in a not-to-exceed amount of $125,000. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is a contract extension with Al Warren Oil to continue to provide our fuel, both unleaded gasoline as well as diesel fuel. They also rent and maintain two, or three, 2,500 above-ground storage tanks for us, and they also provide a fuel system, a fuel software system for us to use with our work management system. The village pays an OPUS rack rate. OPUS is like the oil price index report that governs the price of oil throughout the industry. So we pay the OPUS rack rate as well as an overhead cost of ten cents. This is to pay for the storage tanks, the delivery, the overhead, and things like that. Typically, we use about forty-four, forty-four and a half, forty-four thousand five hundred gallons of unleaded gasoline and 20,500 gallons of diesel fuel each year. Because the costs can fluctuate, we are usually pretty conservative with this award. We've been pretty consistent at about $125,000 per year. In your green sheet, you'll see that that kind of fluctuates up and down from year to year, depending on gas prices. So we're looking and requesting an approval of this contract in the amount of $125,000.
Do we have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Johorska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number nine is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Village of Bensonville Sigcom LLC license agreement. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Back in 2015, we signed a license agreement with Sigicom to put in some fiber optic facilities within our right-of-way. Verizon has since purchased Sigicom, so this is really a resolution that updates and amends our existing license agreement through Sigicom. Basically, it's a housekeeping item due to Verizon, but I do want to mention that due to Verizon being a licensed telecommunications retailer, we are going to miss out on a direct $13,000 annual fee that we collected from Sigicom. We're supposed to be generating that revenue as part of a telecommunications tax that comes back to the village, so we'll see if that actually balances out.
Do we have any questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Johorska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number 10 is a resolution authorizing the execution of the PACE Paratransit Local Share Agreement for participation in the 2019 Ride Due Page Program. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is basically our agreement to continue with the Ride Due Page Program for the 2019 calendar year. It's basically the exact same agreement we approved back in September when we started the program in October, which is some date changes.
How's it, how's it looking for the Ride Due Page Program?
We're still slow right now. I think people are still trying to take advantage of the last of the Dial-A-Ride Program. We do have some people that have taken it so far. We have about, I want to say sixty or sixty-five people that have registered with PACE for the Ride Due Page Program. I think we'll start seeing more use of it once the new year comes.
And we'll continue to do the public outreach. We'll let residents and seniors specifically know about the service.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Johorska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number 11 is a resolution awarding a contract to Mead Electric Company Incorporated for the installation of an electrical service for the Church Road sanitary lift station in a not-to-exceed amount of $13,959. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this is a small little project that we're trying to undertake. We have a lift station that's located just outside of the old police department that is powered by the old police department, and there's also a backup generator in the old police department that does backup generation for it. We've been actively trying to market the old police station, and at some point in the future, if someone did buy it, tear it down, this would have to be done anyway. So we're trying to get a step up on this. We want to reroute the electrical power line to the pump house, which is immediately to the, to the north of it. We've already installed conduits, in the ground, board conduits to the, from the lift station to the, to the pump house. This contract would be for the electrical work involved to step down from a 480 to a 120-volt transformer, also to put in some electrical boxes to wire everything up, connect it to the generator. So there's about five or six different things that Mead Electric has submitted a proposal to do. We did seek proposals, we did get three proposals. Mead Electric has submitted the lowest of the three proposals. It would be our intent to move forward with this project, get it done as soon as we can so that we can start focusing on the removal of the underground storage tank at the police station.
Do we have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Johorska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number 12 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Selvin Landscaping for the Senior Disabled Snow Removal Program. Is there a motion?
You have a motion?
How about a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this is just adding a third contractor to our senior and disabled snow program. We have over, we're close to ninety applicants this year, so we wanted to split them up evenly between the north side of town center and then the south side of town. Selvin Landscaping has agreed to our terms and is interested in being part of our grass-cutting program next year, so they're obviously looking to do a good job for us. So as long as they're interested, as long as they're performing, we'd like to get them on the books.
One call-out this year so far?
One call-out so far.
Not that I'm complaining?
Nope, one call-out so far.
All right. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Johorska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number 13 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a one-year contract extension with Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for sand and stone delivery and debris hauling in a not-to-exceed amount of $94,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this is a pretty critical contract for Public Works. This is what provides for our hauling out of our spoil that we use for water main breaks and sewer repairs and things like that, so we bring that material back to Public Works. Lindahl, since 2010, has been hauling that out to CCDD facility for us. They also then provide the stone that we need to put back into our holes for those repairs. So again, a very important contract for us. We have obviously a very good relationship with Lindahl, being right behind us over at Public Works. They have agreed this year to actually waive their CPI increase that they were guaranteed, so they wanted to keep our business and continue to do business, so we're happy that, you know, they want to be partners with us, so it's our recommendation to approve.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Johorska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number 14 is a resolution authorizing the execution of year one from a two-year contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation, a caris company for the purchase and delivery of aluminum sulfite in a not-to-exceed amount of $17,120. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
How about a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So this is a new chemical that we use in the wastewater treatment plant. Because of our new plant, we were put a, we were, we had inflicted on us a one-milligram-per-liter phosphorus limit, and in order to control the levels of phosphorus, alum is used to kind of neutralize the phosphorus before it hits the stream. So this is a chemical that we use periodically throughout the year once phosphorus kind of gets up in our plant. Usually, it's a weather-dependent type thing, but we have played with it a little bit this past year, it's been working very well for us, so this would give us enough alum for what we anticipate we would use for the year to keep our, our limits down below EPA standards.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Johorska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
At six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Recreation, no report. We have a resolution authorizing a purchase order for Iceman Arena Incorporated for the purchase of an ice resurfacing machine for the not-to-exceed amount of $90,945. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
How about a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Todd?
Sure. The 2019 capital improvement program included the purchase of a new ice resurfacer. Two of our current fleet are, have proven to be quite unreliable,